Okay, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order and we'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. If the clerk can take the roll, please.
Commissioner Look.
Here.
Commissioner Brested.
Here.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Here.
Commissioner Sabraja.
Here.
Commissioner West.
Here.
Commissioner Gamas.
Here.
Commissioner Schulte.
Here.
The first item is tax claims and abatements. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Brested?
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak?
Aye.
Commissioner Sabraja?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Gamas?
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte?
Aye.
Commissioner Look?
Aye.
Motion carries. Then we have the review of checks issued from Finance and Central Services and from Human Services. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Schulte, seconded by Commissioner Gamas. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Then we have approval of the minutes from the November 24th County Board meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
It's been moved by Commissioner Brested, seconded by Commissioner Look. Any additions or corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. We have two items under Chair's remarks today, and they both demonstrate our commitment to our mission to be fiscally responsible. The first item is really to honor the great work done by Anoka County's Fraud Prevention Team. A new report shows that our team is leading the way in targeting potential welfare fraud. We take this very seriously and have dedicated resources from both the Sheriff's Department and Human Services to fight abuse of the system, so that those people who are actually eligible for the benefits get them and those who are not do not. Economic Assistance Director Jerry Vitson is here to introduce the team. Jerry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, my name is Jerry Vitson, Director of the Economic Assistance Department. And here with me today are members of the Fraud Investigation Team, Jody Gorman, who's the Coordinator, and we also have Michelle, who's with us with the Sheriff's Office, and we have Jason Curfew from the Sheriff's Department. And what we'd like to do today is just to kind of go through one of the reasons for the fraud unit, what we actually do in terms of investigations and process, and then summarize for you some of the results we've had over the past year. First off, the program was established in 1993, so we've been at this for many years. And it seems like every year we improve the way we do the investigations, the efficiency, and kind of the outcomes of the program. The idea essentially is to prevent fraud before it happens. If we can't get to it that quickly, then if there is fraud that we've identified, then to recover those funds where fraud is involved. Secondly, to increase the public confidence in the program for integrity of the program. And we want the public to know, if they're supporting these programs, that we're identifying if there are issues in terms of getting benefits, and we take care of that to make sure that it doesn't happen. We do it very quickly. Third area that it was brought about for is to identify the limitations and kind of identify where we can make policy changes. There are situations where perhaps we're not doing a very good job of initially looking at information to identify that there might be an issue, so those kinds of things come up as we investigate the fraud situations. Next is that we like to increase the object compliance with reporting. We make it real clear in the beginning that what we expect from people is good information. You give the information that's accurate and that if you're not doing some investigation, you're probably, you want to make it clear that that's what we do, and that is what the Investigation Unit does. And then finally, the idea of saving benefits for those most in need. There are limited dollars obviously appropriated for many of these programs, and it's important that we get the services to those areas that, where they're most needed. Just quickly, the programs that are covered. They include the cash programs, supplemental food and nutrition program called SNAP, medical assistance, childcare assistance, and then other programs that are state-funded such as general assistance. And just want to emphasize, I think what makes this a very quality program, I think, is the collaborative effort. And the, we're going to, through the slide here, just give you an idea of who the members of the group are. It's, the Coordination Unit is in the Economic Assistance Department, and also the Economic Assistance Department does most of the referral to the program. Also referring to the programs, the childcare, Social Service Childcare Program. The Sheriff's Office does the investigations. The County Attorney's Office does prosecution in cases which are high amounts of fraud or we're identifying repeated fraud. The Central Accounting Office does collections, and also a member of our Program Integrity Team is the county's internal auditor, who kind of gives us advice about practices in terms of, and control in terms of where we might be able to find fraud. Just review for us real quickly what the process is for investigation.
So we get referrals from a couple of sources. We have a hotline, a state hotline, that I get fraud tips on, and I'll go through those to make sure they're adequate or good referrals. And then we also get referrals from income maintenance staff. And we train them or we educate the staff on how to identify cases that would require a referral. If something in the case just doesn't seem right, you know, if there's not enough income to pay rent, that would be an example of where they would want to do a fraud referral. The referral comes to me and I look it over and do some preliminary, real quick investigation. And then we pass that on to the sheriff deputies who do the physical investigation. And then, once they are done with their investigation, they give us a summary, and then we recommend what actions the income maintenance workers should take. And Michelle is going to go over what she does as part of the investigation process.
Once a fraud referral is received by the deputies, by the investigators, we'll do some review of the file. May go back into case notes and look at conversations that were had between the caseworker and the client themselves. Once that is done, we may utilize other data sources such as police reports, DMV records, may talk to other government agencies such as child support or subsidized housing, lots of different other agencies that we can use to gather information, additional information. Then we'll go out and conduct a surveillance. Surveillance may be conducted or may not, depending on what it is that we're looking for. When we receive the file, they may be asking, we don't know why someone may be able to afford their rent. So they want to know the household composition, is the absent parent or the father of the children in the home, are they working and not reporting their income? So we may go out and conduct surveillance to see if, we see who's coming and going from the home, vehicles that are parked at the home, whether they're leaving for work or not. If we don't have a lot of that background information, surveillance may not be conducted, and we may then just go ahead and knock on the door and try to make contact with the client to, you know, ask some questions, gather additional information. And we may also request of them, if we could do a walkthrough of the home. If we do that, obviously we're looking for evidence of other people within the home that they aren't reporting. Once the knock and talk is done, and I gather all my information, and then I compile my report or my findings, what I'll do is I'll include all the information I've found, and then I'll bullet point at the end why I made the determination that I did. And then, Jody, we'll talk about what happens once the determination is met.
So once the summary is received from the investigator, then it's passed on to the financial worker, and they would take appropriate actions. And in some cases, that means there's no action taken because there was nothing found. If it's an application, they would deny the application based on if we did find discrepant information, or if it's an open case, we would terminate benefits. Then the financial worker would also determine if overpayments need to be calculated, and if so, then the client enters into a repayment agreement with our accounting office to start repaying those benefits back. There are certain instances where we would send out an intentional program violation waiver to the client, and that is done, I meet with my supervisor, and we go through, and if it meets certain criteria, we mail the form out, and it's up to the client to decide to agree to a disqualification period. They're disqualified one year for the first offense, two years for the second offense, and permanently for third and subsequent offenses. There are some cases where we will take them to an administrative disqualification hearing, and that can be done upon client request, or if we feel we haven't gotten the program violation waiver back from the client, and we feel we have strong evidence, we will take that case to a hearing in front of, with a state judge. And then there are some cases where we do pass it on to the County Attorney's Office, and those are cases, like Jerry said, if, you know, we're looking at an overpayment of over $5,000, or where there's just a lot of complications, complicated things going on with the case. Our most common findings are inaccurate household composition, and that would be they haven't reported the father in the home, or sometimes they report children that are there, but they're really not, they're living somewhere else. Unreported income, and that's, that's a common one, and especially with self-employment, they're not always reporting all of their self-employment income. Inaccurate county of residence, and unreported assets for the cash program, which coincides with the absent parent not being reported, and his assets that he would have.
Okay, then just finally, I'm going to review with you the outcomes for this year, and trying to move ahead to that slide. Just to kind of put it in context, the, our department does eligibility determinations for about 40,000 people a year, so it's, it's a large number of people that, kind of the universe of who possibly we could investigate. This current year, we had 609 referrals, and those come both from staff, but they also come from the public. There's a hotline number for fraud, and anyone can report a fraud, and we're required to investigate that. So referrals are made, and that's a high number of referrals. And pretty much, we're consistently high from year to year. We have, compared to other counties, I think, again, that kind of that team approach, our financial workers, our childcare workers, and so forth, are likely to report something, because I think they know the investigation units will do a good job following up on it and really determining a proper, they'll make a good effort to make sure that it's a fair review of the issues. About 497 of those cases had findings of some sort. So it could be as little as that, you know, small bit of income wasn't included, we have to recalculate it, but some, some evidence of needing to change income information. We had $1,324,000 in cited overpayments and in savings. And again, we are consistently high in the state for that year after the year, but this year we were the highest in the state in terms of the overpayments cited in savings. So I think a really good job, and that's been, again, consistent over the years. We're usually at the top of the state, at the top levels of collections. Cost-benefit ratio, and this is kind of an effort the state makes to take a look at how much money did we give you and what were the results? And again, we're consistently high in this area, year after year, in the top ratings. And this year, I believe we were second in the state. So a very good effort, I think, in terms of the money that we get, that we spend it well. Average days of investigation, of 11 days, and the state minimum is 15 days. That's a really quick turnaround in terms of investigating possible fraud. And I think what that really does is allows us to get to those savings before they become a problem, where there's actually public dollar spent. And then finally, referrals to the County Attorney's Office, obviously one of our partners. This is important in the very high dollar value cases, or in cases where, I think in particular where we see multiple cases of fraud involved, maybe a history of fraud and that type of thing. And those are the kinds of cases that the county attorney takes a look at. And just in closing, I want to thank the County Board for your support of the program. The county does put some resources into this, and I think the staff have done a remarkable job of using it well, but I think it's your, your support of that effort that is very helpful to us. And we'd like to thank you for recognizing us today for the program. Thank you.
I just want to thank you so much for the very hard work that you do on behalf of the taxpayers of Anoka County, and I think something that maybe was skimmed over a bit is that as far as recovery, you were number one in the state as far as dollars recovered. And when you compare other very large counties, Hennepin, for example, is a much larger population, it is remarkable that this county is recovering more than that large county is. So that credit really goes to the hard work of, of all of you who really work to make sure that the public understands that welfare fraud will not be tolerated in Anoka County. And so just want to thank you again for all of your hard work and effort, and I think they deserve a round of applause. Our second item under Chair's remarks is also following our mission to be fiscally responsible and to recognize the achievement of our finance unit. I'd like to ask Finance Committee Chair Look to lead this recognition. Commissioner?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to start off by saying I think everything we do here touches on finance in one level or another, how we handle the taxpayers' dollars. And the annual financial report is somewhat of our, I would say, a report card of how did we do? And today we have a wonderful opportunity to recognize the finance and budget staff for once again being the best when it comes to Anoka County's comprehensive annual financial report. Let me touch a little bit on best. It's one thing to say it, but there's 87 counties in the state. Fifteen of 87 counties are awarded this award. Fifteen only of the 87 are awarded this award. And there's only two other counties in the state that have had the award longer than Anoka County has, that being Hennepin and Ramsey. Again, large counties, lot of resources there. So I just want to emphasize the fact that this is no small achievement, but that ongoing, our staff, our team has excelled in doing this. And I'd like to ask Finance Division Manager Corey Kemp to tell us more about the award and to introduce the team responsible.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Look. Madam Chair, Commissioners. Anoka County has been awarded for the 20th consecutive year the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting by the government officers, by the government finance officers of the United States and Canada for its comprehensive annual financial report, otherwise known as the CAFR. The Certificate of Achievement is the highest form of recognition, of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. The CAFR has been judged by an impartial panel to meet the highest standards of the program, including demonstrating a constructive spirit of disclosure to clearly communicate the county's financial story. So with this, with this award, I would like to recognize the Finance and Central Service Division. There's a lot of effort that goes in from a lot of people from across the division, but in particular, I'd like to recognize the Central Accounting Group for their efforts. And so if they could stand, as I call their names, to be recognized. Brenda Pavlik Beck, our accounting director, leads that team. Lindsay Meyer, our accounting manager, who is very instrumental in pulling the whole thing together. And then we have some, and then we have our accountants that are very instrumental in putting together, Nicole Beckers, Coleen Carlson, Kathy Cook, and Bev Kraus. So, all right, so I'd just like to thank all these guys for all their hard work. There's a lot of effort that goes into this. This is a great award. And so I'd like to present this plaque here to Commissioner Look, our Finance Committee Chair. So I'll do that.
Madam Chair, I just think this, this speaks to transparency of our government and how we operate and why we operate, and I just think it's, it's, I mean, 28 years, was it? Ongoing? 28 years. Incredible, incredible. So very proud of our team and our staff and the work that they're able to accomplish.
Well, congratulations to the entire team. I'll talk a little bit more about how we put our mission first during our budget discussion, but the work of these employees is really a testament that our efforts to control spending and provide services in the most effective and efficient way possible is really at the forefront, and way to go. We really are appreciative of all of your hard work and effort. Okay, now we will move on to Management Committee Report. Commissioner West?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We, we have one basic group item here. We are going to replace and restructure in Human Services, Community Health, and Environmental Services, a public health nurse position, grade 612. We have a point, a halftime vacancy, and we are going to divide the halftime into small increments to create a two full-time and 1.8 time public health nurse, grade 12. So we'll have some incumbents getting additional hours to their position.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Cordiak?
Aye.
Commissioner Sabraja?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Gamas?
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte?
Aye.
Commissioner Look?
Aye.
Commissioner Brested?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And Madam Chair, the rest is informational. That concludes my report.
Okay. Thank you very much. Moving on, consider approving the Home Program Subrecipient Agreement between Dakota County Community Development Agency and Anoka County. And we have Karen Scaper to address this.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, in order to receive home investment partnership funding from the federal government, the, many counties in the metro area had to band together about 15 years ago. Dakota County took the lead position, and with the contiguous counties of Washington, Ramsey, Anoka, and Dakota, we were able to create a consortium. In order to receive the funds which go to Dakota County, we need to have a subrecipient agreement in place. This agreement will spell out how, how the roles are divided, which pieces Dakota County will handle, and which pieces Anoka County and the other grantees will handle. It's a required piece of us getting the funding for this next year.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move it.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Sabraja?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Gamas?
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte?
Aye.
Commissioner Look?
Aye.
Commissioner Brested?
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, moving on to the next item, consider approving contract C0004747, renewal of the Crime and Faithful Performance Bond from National Youth Fire Insurance Company through Arthur J. Gallagher for a one-year period ending January 1st, 2017 in the amount of $8,624. And I will move approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Gamas?
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte?
Aye.
Commissioner Look?
Aye.
Commissioner Brested?
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak?
Aye.
Commissioner Sabraja?
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item is to consider approving contract C0004748 relating to the Medical Examiner's Office. And the first item is renewal of medical profession, professional liability insurance from the Midwest Medical Insurance Company Group in the amount of $17,768. And then the second piece is purchasing a one-time tail coverage policy for Dr. Mackie Bojack in the amount of $4,022. And I will move items 11A and B. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Gamas?
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte? Commissioner Look?
Aye.
Commissioner Brested?
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak?
Aye.
Commissioner Sabraja?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item is to consider approving contract C0004750, the renewal of the Minnesota Youth Workers Compensation Insurance from Berkeley Risk Administrators Company, again through Arthur J. Gallagher, for a one-year period ending December 15th, 2016, in the amount of $11,234. And I would move approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Schulte?
Aye.
Commissioner Look?
Aye.
Commissioner Brested?
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak?
Aye.
Commissioner Sabraja?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Gamas?
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item is Resolution 2015-161, the County Board Adoption of Final Levy and Final Operating Budget and Capital Improvements Budget for the 2016 program year for Anoka County. Is there an offer for the resolution?
I'll offer it.
Resolution's been offered by Commissioner Schulte. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Look?
Madam Chair, I, this is the final approval. I did oppose the preliminary approval. I will be opposing the final as well. There's been some talk in the community about the reasons why we've increased the levy. I don't want to say that it's unusual or irresponsible. I don't believe that's the case. But I do think it's important to note that our levy would have come in flat this year had it not been for state shifts. And there's been some talk in the community, especially from former Commissioners, that, that there have been state shifts every year. And that's true. There probably has been state shifts every year, but not to this level. This level is, I would say, a legal reaction level to the amount that's been shifted to us. And I, quite honestly, I can't be party to it. We are an arm of the state. We do the work of the state here. And to that end, the state should be communicating with us a little more effectively on what it's going to take to get it done, what it's going to cost, and what reality is. And I think many times, the state wants to make decisions that they don't have to increase their taxes, so they look good, they put it on us, now we are mandated to provide the service and we have to increase our taxes on you, the citizens. And it's really a form of tax increase that I, that I am not supportive of. Last night, we had our Truth in Taxation, and a lady approached the mic, a single person, and indicated that in combination with the financial burden of Obamacare, the city went up, the county went up, the school went up, the Met Council went up, everything's gone up. And she's struggling, and I believe that she's not alone out there. I believe there's a lot of people that are struggling. And, and every year that we set out on budgets, to look at our budget, my goal, not speaking for the rest of the board, my goal is to try and come in flat. And what is flat? Every year, we're looking at a budget that's between, our annual cost of doing business here is probably 2% to 6% inflation, your cost of insurance, your cost of fuel, your cost of electricity. All of it goes up a little bit, and you can estimate between 2% and 6%. So if you keep your budget flat, you absorb 2% to 6% every single year of cost. And I, that has been my goal every year going forward, and I think that that's responsible because it allows people to budget and sustain. because it allows people to, uh, budget and sustain where they were at the previous year. And I don't see, despite what you hear in the media, I don't see this economy wildly growing right now. I think it's still struggling and faltering, and there's a lot of people that are struggling out there as well. So, um, out of being, wanting to be consistent, voting against the preliminary, I'm gonna vote against the final as well.
Further discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Cordiak?
As I recall yesterday's meeting, I'll just remind myself, I think I saw more people step forward suggesting that the tax rate should be higher, and that they're willing to pay more, that they greatly appreciate the services that, that they offer. So, I think the majority, the majority of them spoke in favor of what we're doing, and then some. Secondarily, I've never voted against a budget, even though many times I have to hold my nose when I do that. Uh, when you do that, it's not your budget, and if it's not yours, which I spent months fashioning, I just have never been able to bring myself to vote no on the budget, even though sometimes it's hard. Thank you.
Further discussion? And I, just as we do every day, I think that it's important to start with our mission. The mission of Anoka County is to serve citizens in a respectful, innovative, and fiscally responsible manner. It's crucial to our success that we as policymakers and our staff lead with our mission each and every day. First, we're respectful. We pay close attention to the needs of our citizens, customers, and make changes in the way our services are delivered to best serve them. Based on need, we also expand or reconfigure services to be most effective and efficient. This has been especially important in providing mental health and wellness services to our citizens, and these changes have been received with both state and national accolades and awards. Second, we're innovative. Again, we have been among only five counties in the state this year alone to be recognized by the local government innovation awards selected by the Humphrey Institute at the University of Minnesota. Whether it's an innovative way to communicate a very important topic, or a solution for energy savings or workforce development, our employees are the engine that powers our innovation, and that innovation translates into better services and lower costs, which we've passed on to the taxpayer. Finally, and most importantly, we are fiscally responsible. It's a statement and commitment that this board takes very seriously. Consider this. For the past five years, the Anoka County Board of Commissioners has worked very diligently to keep property taxes consistently among the lowest in the entire state, and decreased property taxes for three years in a row while the recession was at its very, very worst, and we had record numbers of foreclosures. It was the first time the county's levy had been lowered in the past 40 years. In 2012, the board reduced the levy by nearly $8 million. 2013, an additional $1 million. 2014, an additional $2 million reduction. In addition to that, we absorbed over $6 million worth of state shifts to our budget with, in addition to all of that. In 2015, we had a fractional increase of 0.89%. The cumulative savings to citizens totals more than $37 million from these levy reductions. Compare that to the years prior. The county's levy doubled from $63 million in the year 2000 to, if you see in, in 2011 here, 112, over $126 million. At the same time, the previous board leadership bonded twice a year. On the other hand, we've gone for, I believe it's three straight years without borrowing one single dime. At the same time, we've created an asset preservation fund for some of those expenditures so that we would not have to borrow money unnecessarily. And we created a maintenance schedule for all of our county properties, something that had never been done before. I will just note that this asset preservation fund is not reserves. We have not spent reserves. Now the ship is no longer out of control, and the county's thirst for debt has been quenched. We will not bond when a sparkly new trend catches our eye, but when the cost of borrowing money is most prudent decision on expensive, long-term capital investments such as the reconstruction and reconfiguration of a building, for example, with the court remodeling, that is a long-term investment. Bridges and roads, those are long-term investments. Those are the sorts of projects that we will borrow for. At the same time, caring for our citizens, especially our most vulnerable, is our top priority. Every life is precious, and we are here to safeguard our senior citizens and children and continue to provide and strengthen and grow services for them. One last thing. Transparency is essential for our citizens to know their government. We've been recognized for our transparency, and we're excited about the new tool called OpenGov that will allow you to explore our checkbook as thoroughly as you look at your own. You can find a link to OpenGov as well as a video tutorial on how to use it, along with other educational videos and details of our budget on our website, anokacounty.us. It's as simple as clicking on the big orange square right on the homepage, and you'll be linked to all of our budget and levy information. It is our honor and privilege to serve in this role, and we are grateful to have such talented and committed staff to help us be successful. We could not do it without them. And with that, roll call vote.
Commissioner Luck?
Opposed.
Commissioner Brastad?
Opposed.
Commissioner Cordiak?
Aye.
Commissioner Subraja?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash?
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte?
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item is Resolution 2015-162, Resolution Adopting the Proposed Public Safety Tax Levy for Program Year 2016. I will offer the resolution. Further discussion? Hearing done, roll call vote.
Commissioner Brastad?
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak?
Aye.
Commissioner Subraja?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash?
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte?
Aye.
Commissioner Luck?
Aye.
Motion carries. And with that, the meeting is adjourned.